Well, do good evening. Thank you for joining us for the February 16th, 2021 Monte Sereno City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and then able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communications or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to the typical three minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. Calling the February 16th, 2021 meeting of the Monte Sereno City Council to order roll call, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Sorry, present.
Councilmember Mekachak.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Protemulahi.
Present.
Mayor Luthol.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Radcliffe or Mr. Leonardi, any changes to the orders of the day?
None for me.
Seeing none, let's go ahead and begin with our presentation this evening. This evening, Monte Sereno is proud to bring forth the winners for recognition related to the Santa Clara County Synopsis Championship Science Fair Award winners from our city. We have here recognition for Kavita Murthy, Sasvath Ramachandran and Catherine Mekachak. And to introduce further the students and this science fair. We have with us this evening, Mr., I've got this here. Forrest Williams, who is a board member from the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. And I would like to call on him to share a few words about the program and introduce the students. And then if the students are available to speak to us about the this project and what it means to them, that would be wonderful. So, Mr. Williams, if you're available.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm representing the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. And our mission is to encourage students, the parents, relatives, friends, enemies, about the excitement of discovery of science and engineering and technology and mathematics. As you know, there's nothing new under the sun. It just requires us to discover it. And many of the problems that we have today is that we have not discovered all of the things in the world that we need to discover in order to improve our lives and the lives of others. As we see, we are experiencing the pandemic, which is not a good thing. But it reflects that science has a significant role in our lives and to make our lives better. So we encourage students to look at science. There will be difficulties, of course. There will be failures, of course. But the excitement of discovery, even though we don't reach our goal totally, we will learn on the way. And we're excited. We just, oh, we just love it because we see them doing something that will enrich our lives and enrich their lives, and it will set on the course of improving the future. So I want to thank the city of Monte Sereno for considering recognizing your own students. I mean, they live in your city, they work in your city, they play ball, soccer, all those things in your city, and you love them dearly. So they are doing something with their lives. They are focusing there on the future in terms of how and what they will do to benefit mankind. And we're proud of them ourselves. We just love them and want them to succeed in all that they do. We have three students from Monte Sereno. We have Kabita Murthy. We have Sasvath Ramachandran. We have Catherine Mekachak. Those are the winners from Monte Sereno, and we bring them to you, your own, to recognize them. And we do really appreciate your doing so. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And to our students, if you would like to speak this evening, we would love to hear from you. If you can raise your hand, then we can recognize you in order to speak to us. If you're shy, we still want you to speak to us. And this is a wonderful opportunity for us to hear about what you're doing and and to recognize that accomplishment. So please raise your hands and if you can find that button on your Zoom and the city clerk will recognize you to speak for a few moments. All right, it looks like we have first up Kate Mekachak and then Sasvath Ramachandran. We'll get that right if I say it enough times. And then Kabita Murthy. So please, when you're ready, go ahead, Ms. Mekachak.
Hi, yes. So I think it's an awesome opportunity that we're able to have to participate in the science fair. And so for my project, I worked with my partner, who is now graduated high school and attending UC Berkeley. And we worked on restricting the location of the theoretical planet nine that exists past Pluto. And it was really interesting because we got to work with a researcher at Caltech for a little bit. He kind of helped us as it is his major research that kind of pushed this theory and this idea out. And we kind of gathered all this data and we used statistical analysis to decide if a model of the solar system with respect to Jupiter. So we looked at Jupiter's position and we saw how Jupiter's position was working in relation if there was a planet nine and if there wasn't. And then we looked at those two data points and then we related it to Jupiter's actual position. And we found that the theoretical model with planet nine was more accurate than without planet nine. And so that was to help have more evidence for the actual theoretical planet nine.
Wonderful, thank you. If we have any council members who wish to ask questions directly of Ms. Mekachak, feel free to raise your hands. I'll try to spot you online. Otherwise, if you want to speak generally to all of the participants, we can wait until we've heard from everybody. So seeing no one jumping in, let's move to our next presenter and that will be Ms. Ramchandra.
Hello. So yeah, thank you for hosting this. My project was actually a biology project, so slightly different. I was exploring how UVA radiation would affect the reproduction rate and specifically whether there was an intensity threshold of UVA radiation that would like that there was a threshold for tardigrades, which are water bears, more commonly known as water bears. And they're essentially these sort of microscopic organisms that that are extremely hardy and so they can resist most extreme environments, the vacuum of space, gamma radiation. So I was testing to see whether they could also withstand UVA radiation since that's something slightly more applicable to humans. So I did this project at my school. I did it by myself. And yeah, it was primarily just a process of isolating tardigrades, exposing them to the UVA radiation and then analyzing them to see how their behavior changed, how their reproduction rate changed, which was the metric, one metric that I was using to measure how intensity affected them. And yeah, that's, I guess, a brief overview of the project. And once again, thank you for hosting this.
Great, thank you. And my apologies for not getting your gender correct, I believe. So Sasvath, thank you. Did you find a response to the radiation in your testing?
What I found was that I was essentially testing three different intensities of radiation, 20, 30 and 40 watts per meter squared, which is based off of how much UVA radiation reaches the surface of the earth. And so I exposed them to higher intensities to see whether they could withstand higher intensity. So I found that it's between 30 and 40 watts per meter squared, since there was essentially a large drop off in there in the quality of reproduction and the rate of reproduction. So but I guess the next step would be to, once again, confirm that and then, I guess, find or finalize the specific mechanism, whether it being their genome that allows them to sort of withstand that amount of UVA radiation.
Interesting, thank you. See anybody else putting their hand up to ask questions? So let's go ahead and recognize Kabita Murthy.
Oh, just like Sasvath, I just want to reiterate how great it is for you guys to be hosting this. I was here last year and it was, it's nice to hear about what other people are doing and also see how great of a community it is to be honoring its students like this. And so my project last year was using sonoporation, which is the use of ultrasonic waves to see if the cell membrane of a cell can be permeated. And so the goal of my project was in lots of biological experiments, it's very challenging to get some molecules into the cell from outside. And so it's quite a long process depending on the substance that's attempting to be transmitted in. And so my project was working with these ultrasonic waves and using different molecules from a variety, using a variety of molecules that have different polarities and different sizes and different charges to see how sonoporation was, how effective it was in allowing these molecules to pass through the cell membrane. And so I found that depending on the size, the bigger the molecule, the more challenging. And the polarity of the molecules too played a huge factor in that. And so one of the takeaways from my project is although right now it's not a refined enough process, when it goes through the professionals using it, there's many different ways that different molecules such as antibodies can be used in order to get a more successful antibody therapy.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Any questions from council, any general comments on our STEM recognition here tonight? Yes, Ms. Lawler.
I just want to say congratulations to the three of you and how outstanding you are and the future is bright. We're very lucky to have you. So again, congratulations.
Yes, thank you. All right, yes, Mayor Protemulahi.
Yeah, thank you. No, this is really outstanding. I think we are really at a crossroad between where the world is headed and whether science will ultimately save us or not. And for the youth to get involved, because it is really your earth that you're inheriting and it's your space. Whether you're thinking about Jupiter or getting into cells. So you've got, you're going both from the very, very micro level to the mega level, I guess, from a cell membrane to a planet. So please keep it up and do the best you can. I mean, there's really, science is really affecting us as we can see everything that's going on around us. Thank you so much for what you're doing and congratulations to you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Mekachak, that's good. You've got your hand up. You're gonna have, you're a little small on my screen, so be sure you do wave when you're ready. I got you there, though. So go ahead.
I will do so. I would just like to say that I'm very proud of the three recipients of the awards. And I think the future is bright for them. Congratulations.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so moving along with this evening's agenda. The next step is oral communications. Oral communications is the time for the public to comment about matters which are not on the agenda this evening. So if we have members of the public who wish to speak on matters not on the agenda this evening, please raise your hands and we will recognize you and call on you. All right, first up, we have Michelle Walsh. When Ms. Radcliffe is ready, let's go ahead and recognize Michelle Walsh for three minutes. Ms. Walsh, go ahead at your convenience, if you are ready. Still no audio on you. But it looks like you should have it, so. Go ahead. All right, it looks like we're still having audio problems. Well, we work to sort that. Let's see if anyone else is requesting to be called on for oral communications. Please raise your hand. We could take you first and then come back to Ms. Walsh. Otherwise, Ms. Walsh, if you want to circle back in by way of a another audio method, using the phone bridge instead of internet or test your audio and come back, we will recognize you when we see you back online. So let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. We'll come back to Ms. Walsh and oral communications in a moment. Are there any council members wishing to pull any items from the consent calendar for further discussion or to ask small questions of the staff without pulling an item? Ms. Lawler.
I just have a spelling correction or a correction in the minutes on item number seven, new business. Motion by Councilmember Turner to approve the consent calendar should be to approve the creation of the Ad hoc Committee on Development of Fence Regulations.
Thank you. I'll make that change.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to comment on the items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Ms. Mekachak makes the motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we'll put Ms. Turner as second, since Mr. Mekachak has his hand up a little faster there. Ms. Radcliffe, roll call at your convenience.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachak.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Protemulahi.
Aye.
Mayor Luthol.
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. Looks like Ms. Walsh is available with her hand up. Let's see if we can get her back with audio for all communications. All right, you're off mute, Ms. Walsh. Go ahead. Still not hearing your audio. All right, not hearing your audio. If we could trouble you to find an alternate method back in, we will watch for you and recognize you in due course here. We do want to hear from you. So thank you. And let's move on to the next item on the agenda. We have no public hearings, so we are moving to item seven on the unfinished business calendar. This is discussion and consideration of the formation of a finance ad hoc committee and member selection. Do we have a staff report on this, Mr. Leonardi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Earlier this year, the concept of a finance ad hoc committee was brought forward at a council meeting by Councilmember Mekachak. Councilmember Mekachak has been in discussions with staff about the charter for the finance committee, ad hoc committee, and has provided staff with some initial concepts. Through conversation, it was decided a best first step to create the ad hoc committee would be for council to name two members to the committee. Subsequently, the newly appointed finance committee members could work together with staff to create a charter or a list of potential tasks for the ad hoc committee to work on. This list could be brought back to council at a future date for vetting and implementation. And submitted as an attachment to the staff report earlier today was the draft charter provided by Councilmember Mekachak, his initial ideas that he had discussed with myself as well as our finance and administrative officer, Mr. Somoranos. And Mr. Somoranos is also on our meeting this evening. We are both available to answer questions. This concludes our report.
All right, thank you. Before we open for public comment, if there is any, do we have any questions initially by council members? Seeing none at this time, I will open this matter for public comment. I see Ms. Walsh is back. We'll recognize you on the oral communications when we finish this matter. Is there any other members of the public wishing to speak on the ad hoc committee regarding finance? Please raise your hand and we will recognize you. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion on item seven. And let's go ahead and open this up for council discussion. And Mr. Mekachak, do you want to present on this?
Yes, yes, I would. So I did a survey of what I would consider our peer groups and in the Bay Area, and it seems like most of the most of the municipalities that would be in our peer group have some type of a finance committee. And there's a spectrum of what they could have. But what I think, what I would recommend that we do and I would support is we have an ad hoc committee that could do some analysis and looking at our finances over the next six to nine months in understanding what role, if any, a full-time finance committee could have. And when I say full time, I mean an ongoing finance committee made up of of our citizens, some of our citizens. So I believe that one of our former council members, Councilmember Labuvay, did quite a bit of work on finance and he worked with our city finance manager and that vacancy has been left behind. So I think if we had an ad hoc committee of one or two people, then that would help move things forward.
All right, thank you. Other council members wishing to speak on the subject? Mr. Lahi, you seem to have a hand up there. This is a new way. Usually I just see you waving at me.
I thought I'd try that too, I guess, see if that works. Yeah, I didn't even discuss it before. There is a lot of finances that go on and somebody on the city council, we do need to take a deeper dive into those things and understand them better to see what's going on. So I think it'd be great to have a finance committee, at least start with two people. And it probably should be an ongoing process, but we'll see how it goes. I think almost every independent jurisdiction has some kind of a committee that helps out in that manner. So I would be very supportive of setting it up and moving on with having somebody, especially with, you know, you're lucky to have Brian as a chartered accountancy background to be on that, you know, if he's willing to serve with that committee, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Lawler.
Yeah, I think, you know, I know that Councilmember Labuvay and Councilmember Turner had done a lot with respect to this. And I know that that our new CFO and Mr. Leonardi as well have done a lot. So I'm not sure if, this sort of seems redundant, however, I'm certainly open to the idea of having an ad hoc for six to nine months to see if there's even, if it's even necessary to have a full-time committee. I think that hopefully that would be to give you enough clarity or give us enough clarity about what's going on. So I would not be adverse to that. And I would suggest Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Mekachak for those two positions.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Turner, do you have any comments?
Yes, I wasn't really sure what the function is of this new ad hoc committee in addition to what we've already done. I think Mr. Somoranos is doing, you know, a good job with keeping track of our finances. And I just wanted some more clarity as to what are the expectations of this ad hoc committee?
All right, yeah, and thank you. I think Mr. Mekachak can speak to that more. I know that at least I was busy this afternoon when this first draft of the attachment came out. I see in the attachment some ideas here for the proposed charter for the tasks. And I'll go ahead and read down that list in case some or all of us have not had a chance to look at it. I just brought it up. Mr. Mekachak had proposed some ideas here and we can expand and contract this or determine if we need to take some other route to bring it back on the next meeting if we can't act on it tonight. But obviously, if we get something done, then we don't have to see it again. So there's benefit to getting it taken care of tonight, putting in a little extra time if we can. Mr. Mekachak had put some bullet points up, review the warrant list prior to each council meeting, review financial matters, budget and policies within the city, and finance director in preparation for city council meetings, review the audit findings and financial statements with the external auditor prior to the auditor's meeting with the city council and the presentation of their finding. And then based on actual meetings of the ad hoc committee during 2021, recommend the charter, membership and functions of a finance committee. I think those were the initial points that were put out there. Mr. Mekachak, did you have further comments or clarifications or ideas you wanted to talk about on that?
You read those quite well. The recommendation may or may not be to have a regular finance committee, if you will, or continue an ad hoc or disband the ad hoc finance committee. It's just sort of see where we are at the end of 2021 and make a recommendation on that to council. At no point in time would the ad hoc finance committee obviously make any decisions. Any decisions are to be made by city council. And when I looked at who would be in our quote peer group, every single municipality has some type of a finance committee. So we're the only ones without one, so.
Yeah, so I guess exploring whether or not we should have a finance committee would be a major task of the ad hoc and then what that would look like. And then I guess my thoughts on this, and then we'll come back to some other council members here if there's further discussion. My thoughts on this were, Councilmember Labuvay had been very, very interested in a deep dive into the city's finances to look at what had gone on, to look at best practices. We've seen a lot of improvements, a lot more transparency, a much better structure, we hope, going into the budget process and all. But certainly, I would like to see Mr. Mekachak, Councilmember Mekachak, doing a similar get-to-know-the-finances-at-a-deep-level and bring forward any recommendations and ideas he has. That can certainly be within the structure of an ad hoc if there's another council member who's interested in being on the ad hoc and being involved in the finances and watching that process and participating in that process. I guess if we don't form an ad hoc committee, there's nothing to stop Councilmember Mekachak from doing a lot of that heavy lifting for us and then bringing it back to the council on his own. But committees are nice in that they give a sounding board for more than one person to do that. So Councilmember Turner.
Yes, can I make a suggestion? I think one of the things that that would be helpful was, would be for Councilmember Mekachak to sit down with Mr. Somoranos to gain a better understanding of the finances and the accounts as we have set it up. And then we will have a budget session. And then we will have a budget session. And then perhaps after the budget session, we can visit this this whole thing about having a finance ad hoc committee after that. That would be my suggestion.
All right, other council members? Yes, Councilmember Lawler?
That actually makes sense. You know, we could tie it all in with the budget process. Sounds like.
All right, and Mayor Potemalai?
Yeah, I think we've discussed it enough. I don't see what's going to be, what we'd gain by waiting on it. If Ms. Turner doesn't want to be on the committee, I'd be happy to serve on it. But I do think we need to do the bigger dive because there are bills that come in, other things that come in on a regular basis. And as council members, we have like, you know, five days to look at the warrant list, inspection list and everything else. It, I don't think we are doing enough of a due diligence regarding our finances and seeing what other alternatives are available. So let's make the committee and we can always disband it. It's an ad hoc committee and get started on it. I think Mr. Mekachak is there. I could start reviewing it from whatever is going to come up for next next month's meeting and move on. It will be helpful in the budget also. Decisions obviously are going to be made at the city council level, but we should have a finance committee in place. And I really look at it as a long-term thing. It should not be where we are just leaving it up to us council members to review litany of things at the very last minute and it's not giving us enough time to do that. I would support going forward right now to setting up a committee and we can always just ban it later. I don't know what we're what's there to lose. I mean, some council members are going to be putting in more time to review things. And it's not like we're going to be getting in somebody's way when we're reviewing it, but we'll have a very chance. Looking at a lot of big costs that are out there and seeing if there's something that can be cut or reduced or or expanded.
Now, one thing for the council consideration as you're thinking about the formation of this committee is that if you have something that has continuing jurisdiction over, you know, budget and finance, that's going to be considered a standing committee of the city council if you put two council members on it. And that means that that committee, even though it's less than a quorum, is going to need to comply with Brown Act notice and open meeting requirements. I don't think that having a temporary ad hoc that involves, you know, a review of the city's finances, you know, for the next several months for the purpose of determining whether you need a more permanent, you know, committee, either a permanent standing committee or, you know, a citizen committee where you appoint other persons to help review the city's budget and advise on all sorts of things related to that is going to necessarily be a standing committee. So I think, you know, based on the charter that is proposed for this agenda item. You know, if you wanted to do that for six months or nine months, I think that would be fine and you could do it as an ad hoc. But I don't think that you could do this, you know, indefinitely and continue to renew this type of committee from year to year.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, you had additional comments?
Yeah, you know, if it's if it's if it's six months until we get to the budget, then yes, I would serve on it with with Councilmember Mekachak. And, you know, there are some things that I can probably contribute to to being in that ad hoc committee with Councilmember Labouvet.
All right. So, yeah, my thoughts on this, both from the city attorney's comments and the comments we've heard from other members here. It does sound like the start is of limited duration for six months, kind of through this budget process, taking a look at this and then determining as indicated, whether we want and what if we do want, what an ongoing formal finance committee would look like, would it involve the public, how would that all work? And so I'm for the idea of it. I think obviously we can have a vote on this in a moment. It looks like obviously Councilmember Mekachak should be on it. He's got his hand up to talk further. And then we can talk about the second number. Ms. Turner certainly has history and background. It sounded like Mr. Lahy was also willing, if necessary, to make kick this off. So you two can arm wrestle or how we do that on Zoom. Mr. Mekachak?
Yes, I was going to propose that perhaps the ad hoc finance committee goes until the reports back to council at the second meeting in September. I think that would be a good timing.
All right. Seeing no objection, do I guess we do we have a motion to create the ad hoc finance committee first and Mr. Rudin, should we go ahead and populate it in one fell swoop or should we create and then talk about populating the committee?
I would recommend that you just have a motion to create the committee and appoint the persons and give it the tasks that are listed in the proposed charter.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Potemalai, are you fine with Councilmember Turner serving on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Right now we're making a motion to have a finance committee. And I don't want to put a deadline deadline on it for September. I would just say we review it in September and see if it needs to continue or not continue. It's not going to be a standing committee. So obviously it cannot continue more than a year. So I would move to have a finance committee appointed, a finance committee formed with the items that were in Mr. Mekachak's, Councilmember Mekachak's proposal.
All right, and to populate that with Councilmember Mekachak and Councilmember Turner. So move, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Councilmember Lawler has a second roll call vote at the convenience, Mr. Redcliff.
Okay, Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Potemalai?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. Looks like Michelle Walsh has come in again and raised her hand or perhaps her husband, but I think we're looking at Michelle Walsh. If we could recognize her reopening the oral comment section of the meeting.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize for the audio problems. Thank you for taking a minute to hear this. I'd like to, I'd like to put a special request into the council. Requesting at this time a consideration and response for the city council to consider hiring a third-party auditor to review our current build planning and code enforcement functions within the city office as well as reviewing some of the 2020 projects that came through, specifically some of the ADUs. Now, I know this is a discussion you have been having and will continue to have. We, over the course of the year, have really struggled to work with the city on what what has been very clear-cut code violations. We have in earnest tried to have a conversation with the city manager to no avail. We've requested public records and received partial information back. And it really leads one to wonder, you know, why there's not a direct communication going on. You know, I really appreciate the work the council is going to do to try to challenge the state of California. But the state of California is not going to go away. We're going to continue to get pressure to increase our build starts. And as such, we need a very scalable office of planning, permitting and code enforcement. Right now, there's, in our opinion, some points of failure that we'd like a third party to go out and review and recognize and see if indeed there are some problems that could be used some shoring up before we come in with a need to go ahead and increase building. As residents, we, it would seem reasonable that we should have our assets protected, our properties protected, our interests protected, and that the city recognizes us equally with someone going out and trying to do an oversized project. So a healthy check and balance is what I'm recommending. There's not a recognition of you have a problem when you're inside, so why not get a third party in here and review and just audit and get back to the public to see if indeed we do have a problem or maybe we don't and we just have a one-off example. The alternative is we'd really appreciate any conversation with the city manager. We, if we could have some influence from the city council to make that happen, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We've taken notes and we'll see about discussing this in due course when we can address it on the agenda. So thank you very much. All right, closing oral communication again and moving to item number eight. This is consideration of a resolution opposing the enactment of SB nine. And do we have a staff report or a council member report on this subject? Mr. Leonartis first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a brief introduction to the next two items, really. These were carryovers from our previous conversation at our our last council meeting. The staff was directed to draft a resolution in opposition to SB nine and SB ten primarily for consideration by the council for adoption. And we did receive one piece of course, a public correspondence on each of the items. Both of the items are similar in nature, so I've kind of introduced them both at once here, but they will be handled on separate discussions and separate motions by the council. And staff is available for questions on these items.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Turner, did you want to make a presentation at the outset before we have public comment on these matters? Or would you reserve that? Okay, so if we have public comment on item eight, please raise your hands and we will recognize you. Seeing none, closing public comment and moving to council member discussion on item eight regarding SB nine. Ms. Turner, did you want to address this issue for us to begin?
No, I don't. I just wanted to see if we can get this moving and approved and make it a resolution.
All right, and I guess my question for you, Councilmember Turner, is did you review the resolution as drafted? Did you have any more input regarding it or you're happy with it as drafted?
Happy with it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, I completely support this resolution. I just have one spelling, one change in the spelling. There just needs to be space in paragraph two in as much, but I'm sure that can be changed. But this is great. So thank you. This is exactly what we need to do.
The resolution is actually very good. Thank you.
All right, any other council member comments on item eight? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt item eight?
Motion to adopt.
All right, and second from Councilmember Lawler?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Mayor Potemalai?
Aye.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
And the motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. Moving to the related matter, somewhat related matter. Item nine on the agenda, the consideration of a resolution opposing enactment of SB ten. We've already heard from Mr. Leonartis on this. There's a short staff report including the proposed resolution attached to the agenda. Let's go ahead. Without further ado, do we have any members of the public wishing to be heard on item nine? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, turning this over to council member discussion. Let's begin again with Councilmember Turner. Have you had time to review this? Do you have comments? Are you satisfied with what's drafted?
It's good.
All right, any other council members, Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, it looks great. Another spelling, just item one. Sorry. I'm the grammar police, sorry. In paragraph one, consonant should be consistent, I believe. Planning for their own development consistent with their adopted general plans and SEQA. So just that minor change and it looks great.
All right, any other council member comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Councilmember, Councilmember Lawler on the motion, a second?
Second.
Councilmember Turner on the second roll call vote when you're ready.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Potemalai?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes passes five zero.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number 10. This is consideration of a letter to the League of California Cities regarding SB nine and SB ten. Do we have a staff report, Mr. Leonartis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just another brief introduction of the item. It was decided at a previous council meeting that staff would be directed to write a letter in opposition to the position the League of California Cities was taking with reference to housing and not necessarily fully representing the best interests of the cities. So staff looked at letters that were written by other organizations and composed their own letter for council review and adoption this evening. And alternatives are if council wishes to make changes to the letter, accept the letter as is or not submit a letter at this time, those are all on the table. And we received once again one piece of public correspondence regarding the letter, supporting the position of the letter. And that concludes my comments on this item.
Thank you. And regarding this, I think this one looks like it goes out under my signature, so I'll jump in and state that I was very pleased with this as drafted. If other council members have comments, suggestions, changes, spelling corrections, we're certainly open to them. Any other council member comments?
Yeah, I think it's well drafted and I think you're covering the other issues that come up with a city like ours. Wildfires and things of that sort, because I mean that just put us in a unique position. And the city should consider that and the state should consider that.
All right, thank you. And I just remembered I didn't formally open this to public comment. I was on a roll from the last two, but let's make this formal. If there's any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter before we reach decision, please raise your hand. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Any other council member comments? Ms. Lawler?
Spelling is great. Letter looks great.
All right, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mayor Potemalai, motion by Ms. Turner and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Potemalai?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Turning to new business, item 11, discussion and direction regarding the RENA methodology and draft allocation recommendation. We have a staff report and recommendation. I believe there is new information hot off the presses this afternoon. With that, Mr. Leonartis, you have a report for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Another brief introduction, not unsimilar to the previous items we are discussing this evening. Staff is just looking for ultimate direction, whether we should draft a resolution, draft a letter to HCD opposing the RENA numbers or et cetera, et cetera. Of course, Ms. Turner has been doing a lot of work on this item and she will be presenting a slide presentation this evening. Also included in the staff report attachment is the sample resolution that council may draw from should council decide to submit a resolution as was done in these previous items this evening. And that concludes our comments.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Turner, your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Is okay, so here it is. So thank you for giving me time to speak with you, my fellow council members. And I wanted to talk to you today about the increasing opposition that we're actually seeing from various jurisdictions in Southern California and Northern California. At the heart of these oppositions, we need to be able to strengthen local control of our city. So I have three topics for us tonight and I hope we can determine how to move forward as one cohesive group like we've done at the last meeting. The first one is to strengthen local control. The second one is the SB two grant that Mayor Luthold and I are on the ad hoc committee for the objective development and the design standard. And then the third one is the appeal of our RENA allocation with ABAG that I hope will happen in the summer of 2021. So let me stop here. I can stop. I'll be stopping at every slide and you guys can ask comments, can ask questions as you wish. So Ms. Brad Clifton, we have the second slide, please. So Ms. Brad Clifton, we have the second slide, please. Okay, so the state has actually 24 council of governments in California. The council of governments are actually voluntary organizations of local governments within a specific region. And they're organized as joint power authorities and they're funded with dues from their member organizations. Their most important role is actually the RENA numbers, the RENA allocation. And like I said, they're 24. One of them is A-BAG. A-BAG has 101 cities and nine counties. I want to bring to you the Southern California Association of Government tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about that. Because there are the circumstances between the two organizations are very similar. And so we can, we can learn a lot of, a lot from it. We also have what we call Ambag, which is Monterey. We have the Orange County. We have Sandag, which is the San Diego County. And so let me go ahead and talk about Southern California. Southern California has six counties and 191 jurisdictions. So can we go to the next slide, please? Now, what I want to show you here is the schedule for A-BAG and SCAG. If you look at, if you look at them, they're very similar. The only difference is that SCAGS is nine months ahead of A-BAG. We can look at what they have experienced with the Regional Planning Council, with the SCAG Board and with HCD. From this, we should be able to conclude behaviors and probably trends that you're going to see as we move along with A-BAG. You, we may also be able to find some key takeaways and some best practices. Now, the cities in A-BAG, if you look at the right-hand side of this screen, it started in February and they worked until October of 2020. They worked with plans with the state on how to reach their housing targets. Now, because of the scope and the enormity of the planning of so many units that they were allocated, SCAG asked HCD for a six-month extension because the cities were struggling with how do you plan for all these allocations? And the state refused. So the legislature has established a very tight timeline for this process and there are penalties if we don't meet those timelines. Therefore, I think one of the things I want to bring to you tonight is the importance of preparing for our numbers now. So for the cities in A-BAG, if you look at the left-hand side, we have from October 2021 until the end of 2021 to show how we plan to reach our housing targets. We received an allocation of 192 units. And this is, this is basically the cross we have to bear. Okay, so let's move on to the next, to the next slide, please. Let me, let me talk to you about a little bit about SCAG. What happened to SCAG? Today, I attended a meeting with SCAGS and they've had pretty much their final RENA allocation. They were given a million 344, 740 units. There were 66 letters out of 191 cities challenging the RENA methodology. There has, there had not been in ever the number of cities actually challenging HCD. There's an error in the slides. There were actually 52 appeals that happened today out of 191 cities. Two, only two were approved. The ones that were approved were the county of Riverside and Pico Rivera. Okay, so looking at this, there are many jurisdictions in Southern California where the city officials are worrying about how do we meet our RENA goals? For them, it's from 2021 to 2029. For us, it's from 2023 to 2031. So the majority of their jurisdictions have actually seen their numbers double, triple, and some of them six times, just like Monteserino. Our Monteserino numbers have tripled since the last 2015 RENA allocation. So let me give you an example. San Gabriel, their numbers actually tripled from 2015. And in their appeal today, they said, well, we're built out. We do not have sufficient land to add large amounts of new housing. And the response from HCD was built out is not legal justification for a reduction. Cities must consider options such as increased density or demolition of existing structures to make way for new housing. Corona, the city of Corona, their numbers are eight times higher than 2015. Pico Rivera, which challenged the methodology, actually got partial. They got partially approved. And we need to look at why those two cities got partial approvals. And maybe that's a way in which we can construct our appeal. The Mission Viejo was denied. All, there was, there were 14 cities that got equity adjustments, just like Monteserino. An equity adjustment, just to remind you, is from the low to the very low income. Okay, now, there was a study that was done in 2019. The study said that only 3% of California cities and counties are on track to meet their state goals. And 30% aren't issuing permits at all, for at all, for affordable housing units. So there were 116,000 permits in 2019. 78% for above moderate income, just 13% for moderate income and 9% for very low income. And, and the HCD this year is looking at the very low income and the low income. They're not so interested in the moderate and the above moderate. Right? So one of the things that most of these, the cities said was, hey, we're not taking, you're not taking into account the effects of COVID. I was at a meeting with Senator Scott Wiener last Sunday and he stated that he did not see any negative effects significantly from, from COVID. All right. So, but if you consider Disneyland in Anaheim, for example, it is the largest employer in Orange County. In October of 2020, they laid off 28,000 employees out of 78,900 employees. And we're not even talking about employees who got their hours reduced. In early January, Disney announced that they're removing their corporate offices to Orlando. Salesforce.com just announced that their employees would be given the option to work from home permanently. Facebook said the same thing. And, and we're going to see more of this. Our county could see a glut of excess offices and perhaps people leaving the area once they're no longer tied to offices. So that's something that we have to keep in mind. And none of this has been considered in the state when they push new housing. And that's what most of these jurisdictions were complaining about. And here's what, here's something that we need to know. This is basically a zero-sum game. And what does that mean? A zero-sum game is taking away homes from one city and adding them to another. So most of the appeals were denied. That's why all of them were denied because it pits one city against the other city. So whatever numbers we gain on appeal will be assigned to somebody, somebody else. Okay, so there's, there's not going to be a reduction in the overall numbers. Okay, so can we look at the next slide, please? Or any questions? You guys are very quiet.
Yes, I had a question. I was going to ask you the reason or, you know, why those two appeals were, or, you know, whatever were denied. And you had answered that question saying you're going to find out. So that was, that was my question a few minutes ago.
Yeah, now Riverside, let me see, I have some notes here. Riverside was was partially granted based on land availability. And Pico Rivera was they granted them they granted them a stay because of suitable land. Now, they also said they disagreed with the methodology. Both of them said they needed water and sewer. Both of them said that the pandemic has given them, you know, it's a problem for them, just like all 47 cities. And yet HCD denied them. So I'm going to have to really find out, you know, why, what is this partial approval that they got? So thank you for that question. So let, let me, let me now talk about the RENA methodology. These achieving, these housing goals that are not achievable. So let me give you some more examples. Pasadena, for example, Pasadena's allocation for the first eight-year cycle would require them to build 9,400 units of new housing. That's more than a 600% increase from the previous eight-year cycle. Their previous eight-year cycle was 1,332. Some of the comments that I heard today at the meeting was it's very difficult for the state to make a jurisdiction create housing projects. Now, we're looking at housing projects. And that means the low, the very low and the low income without giving us financial support or considering how the changes will affect our infrastructure. And one of the other jurisdictions said the existing litigation legislation, the math doesn't typically work for developers because it's going to be tough for developers to have 100% affordable dwelling units. Okay, when, when developers come in, they are usually at market rate housing. Okay, so these are very legitimate concerns. Meeting this RENA numbers will dramatically change our neighborhoods. So what we need to do is to give proper consideration to how our residents feel about all of this. Now additionally, when we look at cities like Monteserino, we're expected to build the infrastructure. All right. What they said is you should have done this 20 years ago. The schools, the roads, the sewer, the water, the broadband technology, right? The telehealth, which we weren't even thinking about 20 years ago, or distance learning, which wasn't available 20 years ago. We, we need to be able to support the influx of people that are going to come in. Okay, so for us, this is going to be a very serious problem. We already have, as you guys know, electricity shortages, right? Our surge in water rates, we had San Jose water last week. Our rising crime rate, you read about it in the newspaper. And we don't have the infrastructure to support the people we have today. So what we're doing now is we're actually building higher density for market rate housing. And this is not what they're looking for. So if we're going to provide housing at below market rate, we have to bear some of that cost. And the state isn't going to do that. They already said they weren't going to do that and cities cannot afford to do that. So the, and, and more importantly, developers won't be able to do that. So what you end up with is market rate housing that they're not going to be happy with anyway. Okay, so if we go on to the next slide, if you have no questions, I'll move on. So it is, it is very difficult for people to really fully understand the impact of the RENA allocations. If you look at Nextdoor where people say, yes, I'm for affordable housing, they think affordable housing based on their needs and not for the low income and the very low income. So one of the things that Mayor Protem Ilahi said last week, one of the things he suggested is we will need to put our local residents to put pressure on the state politicians so we can preserve the character of our city. That's what he said. Now, at its core, this is a problem caused by legislation and ultimately it's going to have to be solved by legislation. So we may need to explore ways to get our state representatives to recognize that our city and our people want to maintain control of their own neighborhoods and get them to start helping us to accomplish that. So for Monteserino, we need to keep our residents informed of this bills like Mayor Protem Ilahi says that mandates Sacramento, that mandates from Sacramento and we lose control basically of our city. Now, here, here's what's going to happen. If we fail to meet these state requirements, right? There will be stiff penalties. And if the state feels that a jurisdiction falls short of its requirements, it could do one of three things. It could withhold certification of the general plan. It could withhold state funds and it could take over the issuance of building permits. And this is what the state did with the city of Pleasanton in 1906, no, 2016. All right. So we're now, we're worried about what happens in the next, next eight years. Think about what's going to happen eight years after that. So basically what we're looking at here is that the state has given us unrealistic and unachievable goals. So what we knew, and local control now, our hands are basically tied. Okay, so there's no questions. Let me move on to the next slide. What the council should consider is to yet write another resolution. And this is a resolution that was drafted by the city of Atherton. There have been 50 other resolutions that have, that have been written by different jurisdictions in California. The city of Palo Alto wrote a resolution last week. The city of Beverly Hills wrote a resolution the end of 2020. So I'm asking the members of this council to approve a similar resolution that our city attorney can write and we can approve at our next council meeting. So let me pause there and get your input. Yes, Mayor Lawler?
Councilmember Lawler?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Fantastic presentation. Oh, fantastic presentation. I am grateful for you adding these resolutions and I particularly like the resolution passed by Palace Freeze Estates, my old hometown. There's a section, it's section two that says that the city council declares that should the state continue to pass legislation that attacks local municipal authority, control and revenue, the city of Palace Freeze Estates will support actions such as a ballot measure that would limit the state's ability to control local activities and strengthen local democracy and authority. And I thought that that was a good add. So that, I mean, that's just my two cents, but these are, this is definitely this is what we need. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, so I had a question, Councilmember Turner. On the issue of low income and very low income, several things come to mind. First of all, I think we have overproduced in the ADU category, which in our last cycle is counting as very low income. Do you have information about whether there has been any clarity as, as Southern California and others are dealing with these issues? Are we going to be able to continue to produce ADUs? And obviously, some of these new bills we were looking at really want us to produce ADUs and junior ADUs and split lot ADUs. But are, is there anything one way or the other that ADUs are going to continue to help qualify us under very low income? That's one question. And then it looked like we had taken some grief in our analysis of our progress so far because we, well, even while overproducing on very low income, they're not happy with our low income numbers, if I recall correctly. Which seems, which seems rather ridiculous if we're, we're overperforming on the very low. Information about those, those items?
No, I think, I think one of the things I was going to suggest is, is as we're doing our objective standards and, and city manager Leonardi's will hire a consultant, we ought to, we ought to really analyze what, what we're doing and how do we better prepare for our appeals in, in, in the summer of 2021. We ought to look at that. The other thing I would The other thing I would suggest is, can we take, you know, we're over our, our Rena numbers from twenty fifteen. So can we take some of those numbers and shift them over to twenty twenty three? That I don't know, and be legal still. So that's something we need to, we need to investigate as well. Because our numbers are high. So thank you for that question. So do we, can, do I get an agreement here that we will draft a resolution to strengthen local control then?
Councilmember Mechacheck.
What the downside of putting resolutions into effect? Like, you know, if it's all upside and no downside, then I would think that everyone should, should do that. And all of those appeals that were denied, all of those local jurisdictions would do something like this. It strikes me that there's gotta be a downside to this. And maybe our city attorney can respond to that after Councilmember Turner does.
Okay, the purpose of this resolution is basically to put on record as supporting local control and our land use policies and object to this, and objecting to this action by the state. So it basically sends a message. It sends a message to the state and it sends a message to other cities. And it sends a message to our own citizens, to our own residents, that we recognize that this is a problem and that we are working to do something about it. It also, I think, establishes demonstration that, that may be useful in an appeal later on or other actions that we may take in the future. I agree, this may be a small step, but I think it's a step in the right direction. If you're serious about maintaining local control, we're stronger having it than not having it. And I think we'll be strong in numbers because there are fifty resolutions that already have been drafted and passed. And more are coming. Now, remember, because we're nine months behind Southern California, the cities in Northern California are just starting. And I don't want to speak specifically to every city because I want them to come out with their own resolutions and not have to, to make commitments for them.
And, you know, with respect to Councilmember Mechacheck, specific question as to whether or not there's a downside to taking one of these, these types of resolutions, you know, with respect to, you know, policy positions that the city wants to take. They're taken by various jurisdictions throughout the state all the time. They have been, I've seen similar resolutions sent with respect to housing bills, you know, in the last several years, particularly with respect to, you know, bills drafted by State Senator Weiner. I don't think that there's any particular risk in terms of adopting these types of resolutions. They allow the city to express its position to, you know, and the position of the city council to, you know, the legislature and to whoever else the city wants to communicate that position to. But other than adopting a resolution, there's really not a way for the council to take an official position on behalf of the city, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And Mr. Ridden, I have a question. Well, we've got your attention on this one. On these new business matters, as a matter of policy, should we open public discussion and, and close that before we offer our advisory decision?
Yes, I would recommend taking public comment before you take any sort of action or give direction to staff.
Great, thank you. Any other council member comments at this point? Otherwise, I will go ahead and open this to public comment so we take care of that formality. Any members of the public wishing to be heard on the matter of the Rena methodology? And our response to that, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close public discussion on that matter and return it to council for conclusions, final comments and direction. Mr. Mechacheck.
Yes, well, if there's no downside to this and all there is, is if we're communicating to the state and to, to others what the voters of Monte Serena would like, then I would support this and ask that we have a resolution drafted so that we could pass it at our next meeting. I would be in support of this.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Pro Tamalari?
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is gonna be a lot of, it will take a lot of effort. And I would also suggest, once we, if we do pass this resolution, we send it to our assembly member and our county supervisors and our state senators to know this is what we want. I'm also curious, I don't know what the status of Los Gares and Saratoga and Campbell are neighboring cities is on this to see if they've done any resolutions or not and whether we could package all four of them together. And I think some of us, some of those jurisdictions may have the same assembly member or state senator at least. And, you know, put it in their arms. A lot of jurisdictions may have legislative committees and people who are lobbying for them. We're too small for that, but it would be nice to see if any of these guys have any lobbyists involved. And finally, I think it may also help if this, we can take a poll, some sort of a poll of the citizens of Monte Serena to see, you know, how they feel about all this and how much they want to get involved with it. Because ultimately, it may be that we have to build a war chest if you're gonna be litigating this matter. And either have that in our budget or whatever, we are raising money for that. So we may need to plan on that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawler?
I just have a quick question for Mr. Rudin. Does what, do these Rena numbers, is what ABAG is doing, HCD doing? Is there any argument that this constitutes a taking?
No, I don't think that that's a plausible argument. I'm in part because it's a regulation by the state of the city. So it doesn't really affect private property. It affects how private property may ultimately be used. But it doesn't specifically require any changes to any particular, you know, parcel or use necessarily. Additionally, it could, you know, I think the stronger question would be whether it constitutes an unfunded state mandate. But again, I think the answer to that one is also probably sadly no. In part because a lot of the things the city has to do, it can, you know, recover by fees, but maybe not all of it. So that could be something that could be examined.
All right, so, so taking away someone's ability to enjoy their property if they're surrounded by three lots with a ten apartment, ten unit apartment building, that would not constitute a taking?
Well, well, the question there would be, I think the answer to that is no. And in part, if that did constitute taking, you know, the city would be the entity that permitted that taking because it was mandated to do so by the state. So the city would ultimately share in that responsibility, unfortunately.
So let me, oh, sorry. Mayor Luthold may ask.
Go ahead.
So, so does a citizen, again, this is, so does a citizen have a taking issue? Could you clarify that?
In terms of, you know, in terms of regulations relating to other people's property next door, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, in fact, I think we almost have the reverse problem because if you're zoning your property and your neighbor's property for subdivision or for more density, something's been given to you, would be the state's argument. They've taken away your enjoyment, but they've actually given you the ability to split your lot or your neighbor and you to split your lot. So, yeah, the, the issue is certainly problematic when they're just telling us how to zone or to permit more density.
And I actually, that does raise the other point of once you do actually upzone or allow more development on a particular parcel, any changes in state law or local law that take away the right to build, say, you know, from four units on a lot down to two, you know, i.e. down zoning, does tend to create rights, to create arguments that you have affected a taking because you've taken away the right to develop that at, say, a more valuable use.
Okay, so, so let me, let me move, oh, do we need to take a vote on this or can I move on?
So I think we can move to the next subject. It's clear that we have a quorum of nods to move ahead with this and to request the drafting. I'd like to add, I mean, Councilmember Lawler's comments about some of that language, I think notes have been taken. That was a particularly nice paragraph. The stronger we can word this, the better. The other thing that I would point out is City Manager Leonardi's and I will be attending the West Valley Mayors and Managers meeting and talking to some of those neighboring cities next week. So we can put this, Mr. Leonardi, I don't see you taking notes, you probably already did. We can put this on the agenda to touch base with those cities. And maybe we can, whether we're taking the lead or just doing these simultaneously, but maybe our presentation can be coordinated with the rest of the West Valley cities for a little extra oomph.
So, so just so you know, I have a list of the fifty cities that actually have already drafted, that have already had a resolution strengthening local control. So I can give that to you as well. Now, the city of Palo Alto is finished. And I think the city of Saratoga and Cupertino are doing one now. Okay, so may I move to the next slide eight? Okay, so here are the next steps. So after we draft a resolution, here's what we need to do. And this is, this is something you and I, Mayor Luthold, are gonna have to, to work together with our city manager Leonardi's. This is on the updating of our objective design standards. And Mr. Lardis, do you have anything to add to this in terms of the agenda for next week?
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. So I believe it is yourself and the mayor who are part of the ad hoc committee for the SB two funding. And I sent to you last week a couple of proposals from vendors who we sent out an RFP to, one of the items which was included was updating the general standards as well as updating the general plan, which is updating our object, our, our housing element as well. So we were hoping to bring this back at our March second meeting as an agenda item before the full council. But I wanted to get some response from the ad hoc committee members, both yourself and the mayor, prior to bringing that back as an agenda item. But it's tentatively scheduled for March second. So we do have a proposal on the table. And we do have a recommendation to the ad hoc committee from staff. And we hope to bring that before the full council for vetting at the next meeting.
Yes, so, so, so let me say this. I think something I believe we must do is to update our design standards. Much of the new housing legislation actually provides some means for cities to reject proposals if those, if those projects violate the objective standards of the city's housing element. So site and architecture has worked on this and made a series of recommendations. We should take those into consideration. We also need to complete what the ad hoc committee recommended. And what we need to do is we have to do some upzoning. But what we must do is to do it in a manner that minimizes the negative impact to our community. Okay, and so that, that's something I think that we have to keep in mind. Also, I think this objective standard will be a, the first step to doing our housing element. Right, so the housing element is gonna be, we need to start it in the summer of twenty twenty one. And the, the format for an appeal for, for ABAG and for HCD is, is very formal. They want certain surveys. And so that's why Mayor Luthold, I think we need to give Ms. Radcliffe and our city manager Leonardi's an okay to actually start looking at the different databases that we can use perhaps with Survey Monkey or Qualtrics or Zoho Survey. We cannot use Nextdoor for this. What I have here on the right hand side, where you see for official use only, is the format that they want. They want a web, they want a database that's actually serialized. And, and that is, you know, where you have data integrity and not the Nextdoor database that anybody can just, just put in their names. Right, and, and I also see that we can use this database for the wildfires, for the neighborhood watch program. We can use it for the customer service ad hoc committee. And you can also use this, Councilmember Mechacheck and Councilmember Lawler for your, your friends committee as well, if you need to do a survey. And not only just a survey, you can use the exact database to do what if type of, of access to the database. So that's basically my, what I have for you tonight. So I'm hoping that we have agreed to the resolution to the objective design standards for next, for March second and also for Ms. Radcliffe and, and City Manager Leonardi's to start investigating the software applications for a survey and for a, for a database for Monte Serena.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Mechacheck has his hand up.
Yes.
Question for Councilmember Turner. You talk about the survey database. Can you send the, the reference information on that? What's required, what's prohibited, et cetera? So that other people could understand it. I think that having a survey database is a great idea. And that I think is super valuable to the city of Monte Serena. We are so small, we should be able to put our arms around all of our lots, our parcels, and, and understand what our citizens would like.
Yes, I actually have already given Ms. Radcliffe the fields that we need for a ADU survey. And then from that, we can do an implementation plan and then look at, you know, what else do we need going forward? Yes. Yes, Councilmember Mechacheck?
Oh, I was waiting for Sean to, or to acknowledge me.
I understand, I understand that you've put the fields out, but you referred and you said that, that you were not allowed to do this using Nextdoor, et cetera. I understand that. But where is, if you could forward the definitive ruling on that, not just what someone else's opinion is, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and I wanted to jump in on this issue of database and surveying. And perhaps Mr. Leonardi's will know the answer or can, can follow up on this. I mean, first of all, do we have a, as a city, a complete database of all of our parcels and residents? And then I was thinking, as, as this was brought up, the voter database, do we have access to the voter registration database and illegally allowable use to merge that? I know the voter database is now including emails for anyone who's registered recently. There's much more out there rather than our opt-in database that's very out of date, has lots of vendors, has people outside of the area, people who've left. And obviously, we can do mailings, but we would want our mailings to be up to date if we wanted to send out a postcard survey. So any comments on that or maybe something to further research?
Thank you, Mayor, for the questions. So Monte Serena has the constant contact list. We have residents sign up for that through our website. And then last year, we sent out postcards to solicit residents' membership in the constant contact database. Regarding the voter database, that is something that I don't believe you're allowed to use. And I'm not sure if Mr. Rudin can comment on this more, but And I'm not sure if Mr. Rudin can comment on this more, but that is very well protected. It is my understanding that it can only be used for election purposes. However, they, you know, we can do a little research on that to see if that's true. Regarding, do we have a complete list of everybody's name and address and, and, you know, parcel number or et cetera, et cetera? I'm sure that we have a, a, an application that has all the information about the properties, the GIS system. So it just depends on if it combines records with the most current county records so we can determine who the owners are and get a mailing address. But to make a long story short, I'm pretty sure that we can get name, address of the property, people who own properties in Monte Sereno, names and addresses of the owners just through some kind of county public title records. When it comes to creating a survey, let me back up a step. So we discussed previously what might be coming up March second, and I don't want to get too much into discussion because it's not on the agenda this evening. But council, there is in the proposals a community process with the two vendors where they're going to have extensive meetings, site and arc meetings, community meetings, and steps to help develop the objective standards, the general plan and the housing element. So the community will be greatly engaged. And I would be inclined to work with the ad hoc committee, Mayor Luthold, Councilmember Turner offline this week and early next week to bring forth that item at our March second meeting. And then from there, I think we can pick a vendor and a path forward for a process. And in the interim, staff can research what data we, we have. And I could work with Mr. Rudin about things like you mentioned, the voter database, if that is allowable or not.
And I guess we still, we still don't know, and that's why, you know, Ms. Radcliffe and, and our City Manager need to do a lot of investigation around that. Okay, so let me, let me say this in closing, right? There are several groups and coalitions forming all over California to challenge the state's freedom methodology. And I told you at the last meeting about a group of local governments from both SCAG and A-BAG who have formed a loose coalition to work on this. These, this is a group of 400 elected officials and 65 jurisdictions all over the state. And, and, and their purpose is to promote local control and sensible development. And so I'm going to stay close to this group to understand. They, they were the, the group that also organized this meeting with, with Senator Weiner. I'm going to stay close to these groups to, to see what, what best practices we can get from them and gain access to information that we wouldn't have otherwise. I just want you to know that we cannot underestimate the magnitude of this problem. It's a one-size-fits-all solution for all cities in California. And we are, we are unique cities and our people value diversity. And if you look at SCAG, they are probably the closest COGS in terms of circumstances, the, the land, the land use, the, the number of, of jurisdictions that are in high fire danger. And yet for 47 of them were actually denied. So I think we need to stay close to this. I think we need to, like Mayor Protem Alahi said, we need to stay close to our residents and because they want a rural lifestyle, right? That, and, and we want to, we want to preserve the character of our neighborhood. So I think, you know, I, I want to thank, thank you all for tonight and for last week. And I think we will keep moving forward and I'll, I'll give you updates as I, I hear them. So thank you.
And I, I want to chime in, you know, add my two cents to the City Manager's comments on the use of voter registration information. I have located provisions of applicable state law. I think that would limit the city's ability to use voter registration records, you know, for those types of purposes. But I would be very surprised if we didn't have access to, you know, you know, tax records, et cetera, that we could make use of with respect to property taxes.
Yeah, and jumping in, our City Planner, Ms. Hamilton, has said that we have the County Assessors Parcel and Owner Mailing Address role. We had, we do have access to that. So mailing-wise, it looks like we're good, but in terms of any other methodologies, we'll, we'll have to work as we go forward to see if there, we can, we can kind of come up with more real-time ways to do these surveys and enhance our database so that we can have a quicker turn than a mailing. So just ideas for us to follow through on, but it looks like we've got good action plans here going forward. All right, so Councilmember Turner, I think you've got all of your nods and agreements. We've got things coming up next time. We've got ad hoc committee actions and we've got the resolution going forward.
Yes, thank you so much.
Great. So closing this matter, turning to item 12. This is a discussion, a little bit happier topics than housing. Discussion and consideration of hosting the city picnic and talking about the budget issues related to the potential for a city picnic. Mr. Leonardi, you have a staff report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will briefly introduce the item and I, Ms. Radcliffe may take over. Essentially, as you mentioned, this is a feel-good item of the evening. Every year about this time, we start thinking about our annual city picnic. And as we all know, it was canceled last year, unfortunately. The silver lining to that is we did save $15,000 in our budget that was budgeted for that picnic. But of course, we didn't have the benefit of enjoying the event with our community. We look forward, we are hopeful that this can potentially happen this summer. We usually schedule it for the third Saturday in August. And we, as staff, are planning to hit that target again this year. And usually when council, here's this item. The objective is to reserve the picnic space at the Sonna Park, our traditional spot up there by the YSI area that the city has been using for a number of years. However, currently, the County of Santa Clara is not booking any of those, those spots yet. But nevertheless, when the booking, we hope, begins, we want to be ready to, to be able to make a reservation early and get the spot that we want and the time we want. So, you know, in the event that COVID continues and shelter in place or social distancing protocols are such that we cannot assemble a large picnic or the county will not allow us to book the site, council could consider alternatives according to whatever the county health order is at the time. And another alternative that staff has thought about is perhaps if the August date doesn't work, we could potentially move it into a later date. Last year, then Mayor Lawler and I discussed an Oktoberfest event, although that was not enough time, as we know now, for us to be able to gather. And then earlier this past week, Mayor Luthold and I discussed perhaps a holiday event. So we have some options for flexibility down the line. And I would like to turn it over to Ms. Radcliffe if she has any other dialogue on this item at this, at this time.
No, I think you've captured it all, City Manager Leonardi. Open, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
All right, questions, Ms. Turner?
Yes, I think the, the problem that we had previous years was the catering. You have to order the catering way in advance. And if, if you cancel the picnic for, for whatever reason, then they will not reimburse you for the food. So that's one of the things we need to be aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I am somewhat optimistic. I think we may get, be able to put some kind of picnic together. So we probably need to just get the dates in order to figure out what's the last day to cancel the food or the reservation. But it may be better to get the reservation because you don't want to lose that. And then work off the deadlines to see when we must cancel and then decide at that point whether we need to cancel or, or move it. And moving might give us a little bit better chance. I think with the vaccine and everything else that's going on, our community is also a senior community, so I think our people probably are very short at being vaccinated or a higher majority of being vaccinated by that time. So it may be worth at least having a holding data moving forward with it and then canceling it, you know, keeping the dates so we don't lose any, any deposits.
Great. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, I know the county is, the goal for the county is to have the entire county population inoculated by August. So that would certainly be good for our picnic. And I, I think it would be great for us to go ahead and earmark this money for the picnic. And even if we couldn't do the park, I think we have other options. You know, perhaps we could do food trucks instead. I don't know if the church parking lot or the school would be a, a place that we could potentially hold something like that. But anyway, we should definitely do what we can to have this.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I was going to add, I think several years back, we did use the school at Dave's one year. I'm not sure the reasons, whether we were unable to book or whether it was just a smaller, earlier time. So that has happened in the past and we could look around. One thing that I wanted to mention to Ms. Radcliffe is you might, if you haven't already, reach out to Andrea, the prior city clerk. She knew the technicalities of being there the moment that Vasona opened the reservation system and came in early that day with extra caffeine to be there to click through or call through to get that reservation for our site on our date. So you might want to see how that works and also then proactively see if we can find a contact in the Parks Department there that would give us the heads up for when Vasona might be opening this up for reservations or tentative reservations. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you for that.
All right, if there are no other comments, then let's go ahead. I think we have the nod to pursue this and to attempt with this picnic together. So, yep, we've got plenty of nods here. So closing that item out, we now move to Councilmember Comments portion of the, of the agenda. And then after that, we'll have the City Managers Report. So Councilmember Comments, City.
Did we do, did we do public comment on the last item?
No, we didn't. So let's take a, take a circle back on that. And do we have public comment on the picnic matter? If so, please raise your hand. Yes, we do have a public comment identified as SILB. We can recognize you. You will have time to speak. And you are still unmute, so there you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, actually, I was trying to comment on the last thing. And so I don't know if I'm out of order, but I just wanted to ask, I was having a lot of trouble getting into this form, like a lot. And so I came in a lot late. But I was wondering at some point if you guys could address, number one, what you, and I know this is backing up and I don't know what the appropriate time is to ask this question. But if we can, is the SB nine, is that done? Number one, and number two, are you guys reconsidering the ADU status? So those are my questions. And it's fine with picnic. Although I have to say with a picnic, don't forget that there are the other very variants out. And that may be, not to put a damper on things, but but it sounds like a good thing. So those are my questions, and I'm sorry if I'm out of order, but I couldn't get in before.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. And, and noted that the, the, the new variants may very well be a moving target. So just to let you know, on, on items eight and nine, that was about the city enacting resolutions to express the city's position on those issues. And those were passed. You can check the resolution draft version attached to the staff report. So that was handled here regarding ADUs and such. That's not directly on the agenda this time. And as a subset of SB nine and SB 10, obviously, the city is expressing its opinions on the, the overall. So that's where that stands. Thank you for your comments. And let's go ahead and then close public comment on the picnic matter and move back to Councilmember Comments. And Committee and Commission Reports. Anyone? Mr. Mekachak?
Yes, I attended a number of meetings over since our last council meeting. And I am on the Silicon Valley Clean Water Authority and also the Silicon Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. And I'm Vice Chair of both committees. I don't have anything to report today per se, but I just wanted to let you know that I did attend those. If any council members have anything that they would like to, for me to bring forward, please let me know. And then perhaps I should, I would defer to Vice, or sorry, Mayor Protem Elhe to talk about Silicon Valley Clean Energy.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Silicon Valley had some really good plans for people. If you want to go to electric water heaters. And we have, and that's where the Finance Administration Committee, I think Brian's going to be, Councilmember Mekachak is going to be serving on that too. And I'm also on the Executive Committee and on the Legislative Committee. So there were really strong lobbying activities going on. But then they're a well-funded organization with about a, almost $150 million budget. So they've got a little bit more money than we do.
Thank you. I think looking at the energy issue and, and moving to electricity, the lessons that Texas is learning right now are particularly interesting, although they're having natural gas delivery problems as well as electric delivery problems. But that may be something you want to take back to Silicon Valley Clean Energy and make sure they're paying attention and don't under-budget for energy delivery in times of need.
Yeah, no, they, they, they run very efficiently and they've signed about lots of contracts going over the next few years to satisfy their energy requirements. And they're still delivering energy at about 1% less than RPG needs delivering. And they're trying to stick, stay with that.
Right. And actually, while we're talking about energy, one other comment I have about that. I saw some comments on Nextdoor, didn't fully process them. But it raised the idea that we may want to, looking either from, from your position, Silicon Valley Clean Energy or PG&E or anywhere we can help, help people understand about the energy use. People are complaining about the energy bills. There were comments about tiered use and time of day and all of that. It's just kind of overwhelming if, if people in even my position, education, knowledge, throw up our hands and say, I don't know when I'm supposed to do my laundry. If we can make that easy for people, it may be time for another round of education on that. And if the city can step in and help with that, that's great. If clean, Silicon Valley Clean Energy or PG&E can do that. Ms. Turner? Now you're unmute.
I also wanted to add on to your comment, Mayor Luthold. That if, if you look at what happened in Texas, the Texas windmills actually failed. And it shows the inherent liability, unreliability of wind and solar. And they aren't always there. So I, I would like to understand that better, just like you. I'll join hands with you.
Yeah, yeah, I think those are very, very good comments. So I think maybe I'll really invite those guys to come and give a presentation to the city as to what's going on. And really, the key ultimately might be to have solar storage. So you don't have those kind of issues, but I mean, they're going to be with us. But those are good comments, so I'll take that feedback back to them.
Sounds good. Any other Committee Commission Reports comments? Councilmember Lawler?
Just, just briefly, I was just asked to join the Peninsula Division, the California League of Cities Peninsula Division Legislative Act, Legislative Action Committee Advisory. Legislative Action Committee Advisory Group. So hopefully that will be helpful in our efforts regarding housing bills.
All right, congratulations on that. Councilmember Mekachak.
Yes. Someone earlier this evening mentioned San Jose Water Company and their rates. And how they're proposing to increase rates dramatically yet again. And I had reached out to. Some council members in other jurisdictions. And I was advised by at least one person that they are going to, they, that municipality is going to follow. What the West Valley Association of Mayors and Managers. Are going to do and Mayor Luthold, you and city manager, city manager Leonardi are on. The West Valley Cities Association, and I would ask that you bring that forward on their agenda at the next meeting. To understand what those other jurisdictions would like to do. And I think that as councilmember Turner mentioned earlier, that there seems to be power in numbers.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, city manager Leonardi, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to address what councilmember Mekachak brought brought up. And we are putting together the agenda for the West Valley Mayor's and Managers Meeting. It is February 24th at 12:00 PM. And we do have scheduled. Chief Bowden from the Fire Department, as well as Arn Andrews from the Assistant Manager from the Town of Los Gatos, they're going to be talking a lot of fire. And fire safety stuff. As well as a reach out to Assemblymember Lowe's office for grant funds for more fire resiliency, wildfire resiliency. In all of our communities, a joint letter is being offered to Assemblymember Lowe's Office for Grant Funding for a million dollars. So they are on the agenda, but I can potentially reach out to Mr. Rishi Kumar. We did receive some email correspondence from him today. I I did, at least. There was a lot of other people on the list. I'm not sure if you were copied. But I can find out if he would like to attend the latter part of our meeting on the 24th of February. And we can, I know that we had discussed a previous West Valley Mayor's Managers Meeting that we would be addressing it later in the season, but we can try to bring in. Mr. Kumar earlier in the season and have him speak. In addition to that, I wanted to offer a special thanks. To our friends at Safe Routes to School, KCAT, and the Los Gatos, Montezarino Police Department for the production. Of a four-minute and 40-second safety video for the school kids. Staff has posted it on various social media platforms and we blasted it out to our residents. And I guarantee if you watch it, you will not only get a refresher in safety. Pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, etc., but you will. More than likely learn something new from the video. Officer Greg is the star of that video. From the Los Gatos, Montezarino Police Department. I wanted to congratulate once again our STEM winners that were here earlier this evening. The youth of this community is very impressive and thank you to Mr. Forrest Williams for his. Helping facilitate this presentation year after year, not only in our city, but in other cities, giving those kids the opportunity to present those incredible projects. I am dazzled by them. March 2nd, our next council meeting, we had a little discussion about the agenda on that meeting, but Ms Radcliffe will be reaching out to council. We are, we are rolling out a new software that evening, iCompass. We are replacing Granicus. So Ms Radcliffe will be your source to go to for anything related to the rollout of that. We hope it will be seamless and you will not notice too much of a difference other than a better, a more. A better, improved. Improved system. And that's all I have to report on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager or future agenda items people want to talk about? All right, everybody's quiet. It's getting late. Okay, so seeing none, we will adjourn the meeting of February 16th, 2021 at this time. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.